So I want to call to order the City of Cottonwood Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting Monday, February 22, 2001 at 6:00 p.m. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Romeo? Commissioner Garrison?
Present.
Commissioner De Sisto?
Present.
Commissioner Rich Richter? Commissioner Kling?
Present.
Vice Chairman Maston?
Present.
Chairman Williams?
Here. All right. Next order of business is the approval of the minutes of our January 25, 2001 Regular Meeting. Do I hear any additions, deletions, or corrections to those minutes? If not, I'll make a motion for approval. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a second. I'm not sure exactly who did that, but hopefully we can pick that up. Okay, good deal. The... All in favor?
Aye.
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 We got both from everybody? Okay. Thanks a million. We're on to the next item, which is informational reports and updates from our director. Mr. Ellis, you've got the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. Good evening. Couple things real quick. The Verizon store on Main Street, just the opposite side of Camino Real and the Suzie Q Market, is just about completed. There was some final inspections on it, wrapping up some minor details, but hopefully we'll see that opening up here in the next couple of weeks. As of the end of last week, the Spring Creek Annexation is official. City Council approved that annexation ordinance in January. The 30-day period for the ordinance to take effect was last week. I believe it was Thursday. So that includes an additional 11 square miles, 280 acres of private property that have now been annexed, including the City of Cottonwood boundary. Last week, the City Council also approved the Phase Two of Kinder Heights Final Plat, so that should be getting off the ground. I believe they're working on the first model home right now. The Commission approved their... approved that preliminary plat back in 2019 for another 20 homes on Kinder Heights, just north of Old Town. We do have a new Commissioner joining us this evening, Shannon Kling. So she's on here as well. She'd like to do a brief introduction.
Welcome, Shannon. Would you like to introduce yourself, please? And tell us a little bit about yourself, please? Did you hear me?
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thank you so much for having me. I think you probably all heard my feel a few weeks ago. I'm happy to be here, appreciate the opportunity. Relatively new in town, but learning my way around and just happy to contribute to the cause here.
Very good. Well, we welcome you aboard and appreciate your willingness to volunteer for service. So that's good. Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you.
No, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have tonight.
Okay. Which one of our Commissioners is missing tonight?
I believe it might be Commissioner Richter.
All right. I didn't see it. Okay, everybody else is here? Okay, very good. Next item of business is calls to the public. Is there anybody on board who would like to address the Commission that's not... on any item that's not on our agenda? Not hearing anybody. We'll go on to new business. We don't have any old business. The first new business item we have is CUP 19005 and Verde Valley Homeless Coalition request for a conditional use permit modification to that facility. We had previously approved this facility as a homeless shelter for limited days and times, so I'll turn it over to Jim. He can give us a further explanation.
Hey, thank you, Chairman Williams. As you stated, this is for the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition. It is a conditional use permit 19-005, and this is modification number two. The location is the same, still 654 North Main. And the request is to operate a homeless drop-in center providing daily services and counseling. Currently, the hours... the daytime hours are Monday through Friday, 1 to 5. They also operate the cold weather shelter, which provides overnight accommodations when the weather is forecast to be 35 degrees or below, and that could accommodate up to 20 individuals. First modification allowed for additional nights to operate similar to the cold weather shelter for the COVID pandemic for people that may be experiencing homelessness. So that allowed the same 20 people maximum. They... in the first... the original conditional use permit, as well as this first modification, they had requested a waiver of the fire department requirements to have sprinklers. Those were granted by the City Council. They received some CARES Act money that allowed them to employ the additional staff, and that funding was set to expire December 31 of last year. They're still required to maintain all the requirements for social distancing in conformance with all federal, state, and local guidelines, and they have established policies to comply with those requirements. This modification request tonight would allow the facility to operate additional daytime hours, which could be seven days a week from 1 to 5 in the afternoon, and also allow for overnight lodging for the same maximum 20 individuals, which would be provided on a first come, first served basis. Funds to install the sprinklers have been something the Homeless Coalition has been working on. With this modification, they are not requesting a waiver to the sprinkler requirements, and they will be installing the sprinklers as part of this approval. Some of the things that they've come... the Homeless Coalition has already completed is the chain link fencing. They've installed some safety monitors, closed circuit television, fire extinguishers, fire department knox box, exit... emergency exit signs, better signage for the building and the property, and they have a list of some items that they are going to be improving. A little landscaping to improve the street scene, repainting of the parking lot, installation of a bicycle rack and air pump, and motion sensors, directed outdoor lighting. I've included some... a lot of the pictures on this. There are some new Commissioners that have not been here before, so some of you longer-term Commissioners have seen these before. This is an aerial shot of the site, parking area adjacent to the street. It's only the one building that we're considering and working with the Homeless Coalition on, and that's the... sort of looks like the blue, light blue shaded roof building on the left of that screen. The interior, the left picture here, the interior is the current layout of the room. Presently, as you see down at the bottom of that picture, there's a freezer called storage. They're working with the owner of the building, and that would give them some additional space. It's a large walk-in type freezer in the back, and that... the plans are to have that removed and give it additional space in the building. The exterior area, there's a large patio on the north side of the building. These are some interior pictures of the... of their operation. Little kitchen area. This is the outdoor patio area on the front. This is what you see from Main Street as looking at the building. You can see the patio area and the screening and the shade structures. So adjacent property immediately to the west. This is looking west on Main Street. The adjacent property to the east, and looking east on Main Street. This is the property across Main Street to the north, the Camelot RB Park. And the property to the rear, which would be the south, is a church facility and more of the church facility. So with that, that's my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Should any of you have any questions of me? We also have Carol Quasula and Mr. Peter Flynn with us tonight from the Homeless Coalition. Should you have any questions to address to them as well?
Okay. No, Jim, I don't have anything. Commissioner Romeo, do you have any questions of Jim? Technical questions?
No technical questions.
Commissioner Garrison, do you have any questions of Jim?
No, sir.
Commissioner De Sisto, do you have any questions from Jim?
Oh, sir, I do not.
Commissioner Kling, do you have any questions of Jim?
No, sir, thank you.
All right. And Vice Chairman Maston? Any questions? Yeah, okay. So the applicants are here. Who would like to address the Commission? If you had anything to add to this or presentation, we'd like to hear it.
Yes, good evening. This is Carol Quasula, and I'm Board President, and I think Jim did a great job of presenting the project. And I'm here along with Peter Flynn, and if you have any questions, we will certainly be willing to answer them.
Very good. Commissioner Romeo, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Yes, I do. I was just curious how often your facility is at capacity.
We... with the 20 beds, we pretty much... we've been open probably 30 nights this winter, and of course, you know, we may be opened a few more nights before we get into the warmer temperatures. And we pretty much house 17 to up to 20 people a night. 20, of course, is our maximum, but we're usually in that range, 17 to 20.
Two years ago, it was 40 nights over the entire winter, and last year it was 50 nights over the entire winter.
Okay. Very good. Any additional questions, Commissioner Romeo?
I'm just curious if you've seen an uptick during the pandemic compared to previously in terms of the number of people you serve every evening?
No, we...
Same.
Yeah, that would be mine as well, Peter.
Thank you.
Commissioner Garrison, questions of our applicants?
No, sir.
Okay. Commissioner De Sisto, do you have any questions of our Commissioners? Of our applicants, I'm sorry?
I just have one, and this is because I was in here during the approval process, but when you have overnight visitors, is there somebody on duty there?
Yes, we have.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah. We have two people on fire watch that are awake all night long.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner De Sisto?
No, no more questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Kling, do you have any questions of the applicant?
No, sir, not at this time.
Okay, good. And Vice Chairman Maston, do you have any questions, ma'am?
Uh, no, not at this time.
All right. I don't either. I think it's pretty what Jim... it's pretty well covered. We've been down this road with you before, and so I think we're okay from that standpoint. I see our police commander Dow is with us, I believe, tonight. Would you like to comment, sir?
Yes, sir. The Police Department fully supports this project, and we look forward to having something that's not just there for the cold weather, but there all the time. The Police Department continuously runs across people who need shelter, not just when it's cold, but when it's raining and stuff, and we completely support this project.
Very good. Is there anybody else online who... from the public who would like to address the Commission on this proposal? Okay, not hearing from anybody. I'm going to close the floor to the public, and we'll have each Commissioner like your comments on this project and your indication of approval. We'll do a formal vote afterwards. Commissioner Romeo, would you go first, please?
I think it's a great project, and I would totally support it.
Very good. Commissioner Garrison, your comments, sir?
I really have none. Full steam ahead.
Okay. Commissioner De Sisto, your input, please, sir?
I think it's an awesome project. I approve it.
Very good. Commissioner Kling, your comments, please?
Thank you. I live pretty close to the shelter, just out there on 10th, and I will tell you, there are no disturbance. I fully support the project, and whatever we can do to help them succeed, I'm all for.
Very good. Vice Chairman Maston, your comments, ma'am?
It's been really great to watch this project continue to evolve and all the hard work that the people behind it are putting into it, and I'm really glad to see it being able to offer more services to those in need in the community. Huge vote in favor.
Yeah, very good. I second that we really need to have a facility for the homeless like this, that they can go and stay and be off the streets and it can benefit the community very much, as well as the homeless population. So I'm totally in favor of that. Vice Chairman Maston, I... with that, I would entertain a motion, please, from you, ma'am.
I move to approve conditional use permit modification number two to allow the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition to offer expanded hours of operation for the daytime drop-in center and overnight shelter, subject to the following stipulations. One, the project shall be developed in conformance with the development plans as submitted for and approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission at the February 22, 2021 meeting. Two, the project shall comply with the request of the letter of intent for the modification to allow expanded hours of operation for the daytime drop-in center and to allow for the full-time operation of a transitional shelter. Three, the project shall conform to the Code Review Board comments dated November 21, 2019, July 29, 2020, and January 28, 2021. Number four, the project shall comply with all building, health, fire, and police department requirements for current operations and any expansion of services and hours of operation. Five, a certificate of zoning compliance documenting the completion of conditions shall be issued prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Six, the applicant shall provide email and phone contact information to all property tenants and owners within a 300-foot radius and provide directions for the compliant process. Seven, all clients are required to sign and adhere to the visitor contract. Eight, the shelter shall develop an email contact list with the properties within 300 feet to provide updates and communication. Nine, responsible party contact information will be posted and updated at the front door of the shelter at all times. Contact information will also be updated with CWPD dispatch. Ten, participate in the CWPD Safe Shopper Program. Eleven, the City of Cottonwood reserves the right to revoke the conditional use permit if the use creates an irremediable public safety problem as determined by the city.
Do I have a second to this motion, please?
I second.
Commissioner De Sisto seconds the Vice Chairman's motion. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Romeo?
Aye.
Commissioner Garrison?
Aye.
Commissioner De Sisto?
Aye.
Commissioner Kling?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Maston?
Aye.
Chairman Williams?
Aye. Motion unanimously carried, and good luck, Carol and Paul. Look forward to very much with success for y'all. The next item on our business or agenda tonight is ZO 21001 Amendment to the City of Cottonwood Zoning Ordinance, adding section 428 AR 87 Zone Agricultural Residential. Mr. Davis, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We have a couple of code amendments that are prompted by our recent annexation of the Spring Creek Ranch area up northeast of town. That just took effect last Friday, and the zoning was a question there because the state law requires that cities adopt a new zoning on the property that has no greater density or no greater uses than the original county zoning initially. And we don't have a zone that was comparable to the county zone, which was RCU 2A. Fortunately, the state law also allows cities to enact an ordinance that keeps the original county zoning in place for up to six months. So the City Council has done that, and that will take effect fairly soon, so it will be RCU 2A for a while. But in the meantime, we wanted to prepare a zoning classification that was comparable to the RCU 2A, which has a two-acre minimum lot size. What we're proposing is a AR 87, which is comparable to our AR 70 zone that already exists, except that it changes a number of the development regulations, specifically the minimum lot size, which would now be two acres, 87,000 and change, and some changes in the other development regulations, such as lot coverage setbacks designed to make it as close to the uses and dimensions that are allowed currently under the RCU 2A zone. So if we have this in place, by the time the six months rolls around, and if the applicant hasn't... isn't close to getting another zoning on the property, such as a PAD, then they can apply for this new AR 87, and we could also apply the NF Zone, the National Forest Zone, to the majority of the annexation area, which is National Forest. So that concludes my presentation, based on our staff report in the packet. Happy to answer any questions you might have on this.
Okay, Gary. So basically, there's just a few modifications you're making to the existing statute, changing the minimum lot area, lot width, and front-end coverage, right?
Right. What's shown in your packet is a... it's a totally new zone. It's a totally new section of the code, section 428, but what I've shown in the markups is just the difference between this new zone and the AR 70 that already exists, just for reference, so you know that it's pretty much the same zone, only some of the development regulations are changed to match the RCU 2A and meet state law, which requires us to stay within the parameters of the existing uses and densities in the county zone for our initial zoning.
Good. Commissioner Romeo, do you have any questions of Gary?
No, sir.
Commissioner Garrison, any questions of Gary?
No, I think I understand it fairly well. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner De Sisto?
No questions, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Kling, do you have any questions of Gary?
No, not at this time, thank you.
Okay. And Vice Chairman Maston, do you have any questions of Jim? Or Gary, I'm sorry?
No questions.
All right. Do we have anybody from the public who wants to address this change? Not hearing anybody. I'll close the floor to the public, and we'll rotate again back to you as to your... you have comments or concerns with this particular change in zoning. Commissioner Romeo?
No comments. Thank you.
And Mr. Garrison?
Um, I've got one. Is the expectation that this is only being done... I probably could have asked this the last round. Is this only being done to accommodate this transfer or this annexation, or is this expected to be a long-term zone for that property?
This would be... this would apply citywide or to any new annexation areas, so it would stay on the books. Whether it stays on this property or not, we don't know. The applicant has indicated that they're interested in pursuing a planned area development, PAD, project on this. We haven't seen that application yet, obviously. It just came into the city, so it has the potential for staying on the... staying on this property for a while if, for some reason, that PAD doesn't happen.
Okay, so a follow-up to that is that this property is having to come in with the two-acre designation because it currently is zoned at RCU 2A, which is a county zoning, but if the state land that came along with this annexation currently does not have a zone on it because it being state property, correct? So this zoning wouldn't affect that unless that applicant wanted to use that zoning?
There is no state land in this annexation area. The annexation area is not quite 11 square miles, and all but 280 acres of that is National Forest, and the 280 acres is private land, so there's no state land involved.
You're right. I got that wrong. It goes right around the state trust lands. That's the next section. Would that section of land, if it was to be brought in to the city, what zoning would be affixed to that land? Would it be up to the purchaser?
You're talking about the state land?
Yes, sir. Sorry.
If it's RCU 2A now, we would have to bring it in at a comparable zoning, at least initially, the same way we're doing here.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Garrison, yeah, the state land in question is currently zoned RCU 2A, so this new zoning designation would not necessarily... at this time... So this, this new zoning designation would not necessarily, at this time, it would apply to Spring Creek, but it could also apply to future annexations that the city does that warrants this similar zone. The next closest zone we have is a five acre minimum, which is our G A general agricultural zone. So at the time, it's going to benefit Spring Creek to allow us to meet that state requirement of a similar zoning designation. But for the future, it makes sense to have this zoning in place as well, so that when we do, or if we do, annex future areas that have the same R C U two A, then we don't have that issue again.
No, and I like having that. I currently live in A R forty three, which I appreciate. And so I like the larger zoning. I just didn't know how the state trust land would be affected by, by this application of, of A R eighty seven. So thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions? Mr. Garrison?
No, sir, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, great. Commissioner De Sisto, your comments and or concerns with this change?
No comments, sir.
All right. Commissioner Kling?
No comments, sir.
Okay. And Vice Chairman Mastin?
Hi. So I know that we're copying the county zoning, and so I'm sure that these permitted uses are pretty much boilerplate from that. But I feel like since what we're doing is partially setting a precedent, it would be worth talking about removing the prohibition for manufactured housing. I know that that won't apply to Spring Creek, but if this is something that could be copied for other annexations, I know that housing has been an ongoing challenge with the city of Cottonwood. And while I realize that we're always trying to balance the property value and the quality of the buildings that are going up around us, I think that there are quality manufactured homes that can be put in that are affordable for people. I just don't want to set a precedent that then prevents people from having housing.
They can do that, comply for a conditional use permit under this zoning for a manufactured home, for one on a site. So that could be covered, it's an extra step for them, but it is possible that if somebody came in and wanted to do that, they could. So, and again, this subdivision or this parcel is, I think, very definitely, in fact, there's meetings going on right now with the city and the developer, the old landlord on a potential development of this property. They're getting sort of a feel from the city and giving us an idea of what they may be presenting in the future on this. So I'm sure we're going to be seeing a rezoning application down the road. Scott will enlighten us a little bit more on the process, because there has to be a change in the general plan, which we're going to be discussing in a few minutes. But I think that's covered under the conditional use permits, number seven. So we, that would, I think that covers, does that satisfy you, Miss Vice Chairman?
So under number seven, where it says permitted uses, talking about temporary buildings for construction work?
No, we're still use permits under number, that section C.
Okay.
It's on the next page.
Yes, yeah.
Number seven?
Yes, I see it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just wanted to make it less odorous for people. I just wondered what the, if that was a necessary prohibition?
Yeah, right.
Uh, it looks like, sorry. No, okay, say something as well.
Yes, you certainly may.
Thank you. While allowing it under the conditional uses, if it were allowed as a permitted use, a mobile home as a permitted use, it would also allow those folks with a lower cost barrier to housing to also have a guest home on the property, whereas when it's only allowed under the conditional use, it is only allowed to have one manufactured home on the property, and it prohibits those folks from then having a guest house on the property. And I think now more than ever, we need to allow for those guest houses, A, for additional housing units potentially, but also for those who do need a lower cost of entry home to allow themselves to potentially, you know, work their way up in the world and to benefit financially from that potentially.
Director Ellis, if we did a conditional use permit for this property, for a manufactured home, would they not also be able to put a guest home on that as well?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, they should still be able to. The language regarding the manufactured home is that manufactured home is the principal use of the property, meaning that, and this is what you see a lot of play, a lot of times in various zoning districts, is the primary use is residential, so that manufactured home's primary use is residential. You wouldn't be able to have a manufactured home as a guest house. Guest house can't be that. So I don't see having a manufactured home as conditional use exempting them from having a guest house as well.
How about a guest house could be a tiny house, right? Tiny home?
If it meets those regulations, yes.
Yes.
And those regulations are, sorry, Scott, to interject, just to clarify, the regulations state then that that guest house would have to be stick built if paired with a, if paired with a mobile or manufactured home?
No, I don't, I don't think so.
No?
If it met the tiny home requirements, which I don't have right in front of me, maybe Gary can pull those up real quick. If it met the tiny home requirements, then that could potentially be an option, but you could not have two manufactured homes on a property, one as the primary and one as a guest house. That would not be allowed.
Yeah, the tiny home can be constructed offsite, as I recall, and as long as it's, the wheels and chassis are removed, and it's set on the site. I don't, I don't know if that's a manufactured house, considering, I don't think we consider that as necessarily a manufactured house, but it would be allowed as a house.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, am I correct?
Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And why the distinction between a tiny house built offsite where the chassis is removed, where there's no national building standard compared to a manufactured home that does have a national building standard?
Mr. Director Ellis, I'll let you answer that.
Could you repeat that? I want to make sure I understand your question.
Yeah, I'm just curious to the guest home portion, why tiny homes are allowed and manufactured homes are not?
Um, let me pull up the tiny home ordinance really quick.
So can I interject while you're looking that up?
Yes.
So in this discussion, it's almost a moot point, because the price to get into a two acre parcel at this day and age is not going to lend itself to somebody bringing in a manufactured home. And I can tell you from having to go through this unconditional use permits for the last four years, there is a lot of community pushback, especially from neighbors that put in million dollar homes and have a manufactured home rolled in next to theirs on that property. So I think the rules as they exist are fine. A manufactured home can be installed on the property as a conditional use that allows everybody to go back through this process and look at each lot as an individual item for construction instead of making it a blanket. And at that point, if they're going to bring in a guest house, the city already has those rules and regulations on what is and is not a guest house on the table also. And that could also be brought back as a conditional use if that applicant so wanted to do that. But I think the way it's written, it gives everybody an understanding of what's going to be built in their neighborhood, what's going to be built next door to them, and if somebody wants to buy a lot and change those rules, at least there's a process in place to go through that process.
Yeah, I would certainly agree with that. Commissioner Garrison has spent four years with the Board of Supervisors, and they've had a number of these issues, I'm sure, before them in the county, and particularly in this general area. So I like the idea that they come back in and look for approval. And if need be, we can make some modifications at that point. I think Commissioner Romeo's and Mastin's comments are good in that, you know, we do want, we desperately need affordable housing, but I think we're going to need to look at it on a, more into a subdivision mode as opposed to acreage mode anywhere in this, into our county.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just want to call people's attention to, in our zoning code, section four oh four C C, that gives the tiny house provisions that we enacted just last year, just a few months ago, where it breaks down tiny houses into three different types of tiny houses. And I think we're talking about the second one here, which is a tiny house built offsite on a chassis where the wheels have been removed, that could be considered for the purposes of our zoning code, a manufactured home, and it could be considered a guest house in G A, A R, and R one and C R zones.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, Commission as well, that section also requires them to be built and certified to residential codes and have fire sprinklers installed as well, whereas right now manufactured home, we cannot require fire sprinklers to be installed. And I think we lost, Mr. Chairman, are you there?
No, we lost our chairman.
Okay, I think, yeah, I think he was disconnected somehow. Vice Chair Mastin, would you like to take over? We want to give him a minute?
I think we should give him a minute, just because this is a somewhat, it's just like a, we're right at the end of the discussion. Yeah. Just give him two minutes to see if he can get back online. It's six forty two. Does anyone else have anything they want to add, given that reminder about zoning section four oh four?
I'll fill the silence. So I really appreciate the conversation and the thinking. I like that we give people options, but it's also about protecting rights and property rights, and I think having a very specific set of standards that people are expected to hear to lend to keeping the values and, and the rights of those neighbors around them in place, while also giving the person that buys the property and wants to develop it the ability to ask for modifications, should they so choose so. But I, I know that there's this thought that manufactured homes are built to a standard, and that standard is fairly consistent with a site-built house, but that is not necessarily true, and there are distinct differences between the two. And I know if I had a piece of property, I would have an expectation of what would be going in beside me, and if it was something that deviated from those rules, I would appreciate the ability to chime in on. So I do like that we're thinking outside the box and making things as easy for property buyers and purchasers and developers to do as possible, but I think we have those standards in place for a reason, and we have a process to arbitrate it should somebody see the need to ask for a modification.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Garrison. Just in reply to that, I do think that, like, we are, like, you talk about, you know, maintaining standards, we literally have the opportunity to set the standards. And one of the things that I've found since joining this commission is that occasionally my experiences coming from outside Cottonwood, sort of the polar opposite of you, because I know you're multi-generation from the Verde Valley, is that my experiences with things like manufactured homes on acreage are very different, coming from areas, for example, of the central coast of California, where that's relatively common. And I think that there is an opportunity there for people to make really, frankly, beautiful homesteads that are more affordable. And I think that part of our job on the commission, and I realize this is definitely subjective and more the way I see my role, is to advocate for the people who are at least able to advocate for themselves in our community. And it just seems like a person who can very easily put up a multimillion dollar stick-built home is, it would be easy for them to go through the conditional use permit process versus someone who maybe could make a beautiful homestead that would not negatively impact their neighbors, but doesn't necessarily have the resources or the know-how to go through that process as easily. So I just want to take that difficulty off while still ensuring, you know, the equity of the people who live in these properties. I think that we all want to make sure that everyone enjoys the area and feels comfortable around their neighbors. And I don't necessarily think that that, that where we should start is with prohibitions. Also, to a fault, I think that people should be able to do what they want on their land. It is the most Arizona thing about me.
Vice Chair Mastin, Commissioner, just to interrupt real quick, is Chairman Williams, so he is.
Yes, ma'am, sorry.
I also want to not prohibit those of maybe lesser means from being able to do what they want on a two acre parcel. I don't think that it should be simply available to those who do want to build the million dollar, you know, houses on that two acre parcel. I think we need to provide opportunity for those who really live and work in the Verde Valley to afford to live on, in such great areas. I also live in A R forty three and appreciate the large lot size, and I think that those who live and work here, especially with a very high tourist workforce, would also like to do so. In today's, you know, twenty twenty one manufactured home, I professionally work in the manufactured housing business, is a lot different than a nineteen seventy eight HUD, you know, tin can home that we sometimes see driving down the street. They have pitch roofs, they have, you know, they're very highly efficient, which is really wonderful, and I think that they can be aesthetically pleasing. When I look at Mesquite Springs as a great example of a manufactured housing development that is really beautiful and attractive to the eye. And so I encourage folks to think about a modern manufactured home as opposed to what some of us may historically have seen. They're really amazing units and affordable houses for folks.
So with that, I don't mean to disparage manufactured homes, but they're manufactured homes by definition, and, and as Mr. Ellis pointed out, they are not built with the standards that Cottonwood currently has when it comes to housing. So, you know, my parents lived in a manufactured home. I understand the quality that they can be, but I also believe that we have standards, and what we're creating here is a new standard for property. And when somebody buys into an area that has a standard, I think they should have an expectation of what goes in next to them when they buy that piece of property and they develop it. And if somebody wants to deviate from that standard, which technically being at a two acre parcel is a fairly high standard, that they have a right to be participating on their neighborhood. And so if somebody wants to deviate from that, I'm all for the process, and we have this process right here that we're doing right now in order to give those people the ability to do something outside of the normal or the expected. But I think we have that process in place specifically so that we can make sure we have a barrier to that happening, and we give the neighborhood the ability to interject. And we give the neighborhood the ability to interject or at least voice their opinion on that. And from the meetings that I've had, you can say what you want about manufactured homes and their quality. But I can tell you, they don't come with a high regard for neighbors who put a lot of money into their properties and build what is currently considered the conventional way. So I'm all for giving everybody a hand up, giving everybody the right to put as much on their property as possible to get onto a piece of property and have a house instead of an apartment. Workforce housing right now is abysmal. We need to do something about that. I just don't think that this zoning lends itself to workforce housing or low-income housing for that matter. And I think keeping a standard to stick-built is the way we need to keep it.
Good. Any other comments? I'm sorry, I apologize to everybody. I lost power. Yeah, doggone, these things need to be powered up. They don't like when they run out of juice. So I missed some of the comments, I'm sure. Do, Vice Chairman, are you?
I would, I would like to propose removing the manufactured home prohibition from the code. As the sole change. I think that's the only change anyone's put forward.
To make it a permitted use?
Not mobile home, just the manufactured. So just deleting that one. And then, of course, it would have to go through council.
Well.
I guess it depends. I know that this is something that you don't personally agree with, Chairman, so I figure it will.
Well, what I'd like to do, let's go back to the order and just, now we've had all these comments. Before we do a motion, let's see what everybody thinks. Commissioner Romeo, would you agree to that or agree to keep it a conditional use permit?
I would, I'm in agreement with Vice Chair Mastin to take the conditional use away and make it a permitted use.
Okay, Commissioner Garrison, I think we know your feelings on that, correct?
Yes, sir, you do.
Yes. Commissioner DeSisto, your comment on this?
I agree with Commissioner Mastin on this.
Okay. Commissioner Kling, your comment, please.
Well, if I may, to summarize what Commissioner Romeo and Mastin and Garrison have stated. This project to me seems like one that the minimum buy-in is two acres. Affordability is not necessarily the focus of this project, if I'm reading between the lines correctly, so.
Well, we're not talking about a project right now. We're just talking about, this would apply to all two-acre zoning throughout the city.
Okay. I mean.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's okay. With the concern of affordability, I'm kind of neutral in between these two, to be honest with you. Because I see both sides of it from a real estate perspective. The need is great for affordable housing and to be able to do something manufactured. But we do have the conditional use in place, so that would give them the opportunity to present it at that time. Understanding that the neighbors', you know, future down the road, it's something that they should have a say in as well. So I see both sides of it, to be quite honest.
That's my feel. I, I, I've been on the commission now for over 11 years. And in these kind of situations where you could have mixed reactions, one of the things we attempt to do as a commission. We're sort of the gatekeeper when they come through on air with zoning and development. And we really want to be cognizant of our neighbors, whether they're in the city or in the county, should not make any difference. And I know a lot of this zoning, we don't have a great deal within the city, but we do have some. And this particular parcel, getting back to this, this parcel, you know, it's going to be in the midst of what is in the county of two-acre zoning. And people building on those two-acre parcels. And we should, you know, at least for the adjoining property owners and ones in close proximity. To possibly have a voice, we could still permit that conditional use permit. There's nothing to say we couldn't at all, even after we hear all the comments. To me, it just gives the commission a little bit more flexibility in control of what goes on these two-acre parcels. Which I think is, in my personal opinion, is smart development. And we really want to, we don't want to lose sight of it. We don't want to lose that ability. Because there have been, as Commissioner Garrison expressed, a lot of throwback on and feedback on some of these. And in these county areas, and that could apply here as well. Commissioner Mastin, Vice Chairman, I'd entertain a motion if you want to make that change in your motion. You're welcome to it. I would like to get a vote on, I'd really like to get a vote as it's proposed and first, and then we'll go from there.
Chairman?
Yes.
Real quick, can we go back to Mr. Ellis and his comment about the standard of the housing? And because I think that's really an important point that isn't being picked up on here. We're overlooking our standards in order to deal with what is perceived as an affordability problem. But, but we have a standard in place and to be requiring one homeowner to reach one standard and now allow the property owner right next door to bypass that standard. To me, doesn't, doesn't play fair. And so if Mr. Ellis could talk about the differences in the standards between a site-built home and a manufactured home. I think it might be a little helpful in making the decision we're faced with.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Garrison, so some of the standards, like I mentioned earlier. Because the question was brought up between manufactured home and a tiny home. With a manufactured home, we cannot require things like fire sprinklers. Manufactured home standards are set by the state. Those homes are then inspected by the state. Our inspectors don't look at anything to do with the build of them. They will look at the placement of them, but the way they're constructed is completely set by the state. We have no control over it. The most we have is in our ordinance, what constitutes a manufactured home and a date provision, which I believe is June of 1976. Anything built prior to that cannot be placed anywhere. But again, those standards on manufactured homes and fire sprinklers, that's, that's one of the things our fire department is really proud of. They like to encourage on single-family homes is fire sprinklers are required. But manufactured home, because that power has been taken away from us, the state controls all of it and has basically said, no, you can't do that.
Mr. Ellis, I apologize for my ignorance on this issue. The fire sprinklers, is that, is that only for new builds and beginning relatively recently? I just, I live in a stick-built home that doesn't have them. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, so it's been in place for, for a little while now. And it is for new builds or remodels that could potentially trigger that. I don't know exactly what those parameters are on the remodel. I think it's either the size or footage or even the valuation. But that's up to our fire department. So we have had instances of remodels coming in or making something from a single family to a duplex. Adding a story, adding a room, some things like that can trigger that fire sprinkler requirement in a residence that's already existing that may not have any.
Okay, Vice Chairman, I answered your question?
Commissioner Garrison, did I answer your question, sir?
Yeah, I think so. And if I remember right, it was passed about 10 or 12 years ago on pursuit of the fire department. And I believe it's a thousand square feet modification to a structure requires fire sprinklers to kick in.
I believe that's a commercial, Commissioner Garrison, I think residential is basically what they say is zero square feet. So any residential requires it. And I think the commercial is the thousand-square-foot cutoff.
Yeah, it's zero on residential on new build, but modifications, because I'm looking at adding a garage. And, and I was told once I hit 1,000 square feet, I have to update the house to residential, to fire sprinkler. So, so that, that's why some homes don't have it, unfortunately.
Good to know. Thank you for the clarity, Mr. Ellis, and the garage story. Planning on adding a garage myself.
Vice Chairman, why don't we get to that and we'll see where we're at? With a vote for everybody, just to, and if we need be, we'll do a second vote with a modification.
All right. So.
Mr. Chairman, this is a recommendation to council.
Yes, this is a recommendation to council, yes.
Yes, just so, because I know we have some new commissioners with us today. Mr. Chairman, could you just explain it in that process really quickly?
All right, well, yes, well, yes. Over the years, historically, what we do with motions. An exception to the minutes is, since some of them have, as we've seen tonight, a whole extensive list of stipulations to facilitate that. We've designated the vice chairman to make our motions for us rather than just any one of the commissioners. But when it comes to the second, of course, it's open to, to all commissioners, to second, and of course, to vote on it. And we do roll call votes per state statute, so we know where everybody stands and we go for that. And so I think, to be in order, I think. Let's, let's make, do a commotion and see where we stand on, on the staff recommendation at this point.
All right, so I'm initially going to do the motion as written. And then if needed, we will do the motion with modification.
Yeah, that is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to recommend approval to the city council to propose amendments to the zoning ordinance adding section 428.
Okay, do I have a second to that motion? I'll second, I'm sorry, to Mr. Garrison?
So moved.
So moved. We have a motion and a second to the vice chairman's motion. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Romeo?
Nay.
What was that? I'm sorry, go back.
Nay.
To, nay?
No, correct.
All right.
Commissioner Garrison?
Aye.
Commissioner DeSisto?
I believe it's nay.
Commissioner Kling?
I'm sorry, I didn't unmute myself. Reluctantly, aye.
Vice Chairman Mastin?
Nay.
Chairman Williams?
Aye. So what's our vote total?
Three, three.
Yep, we're at three, three.
Three, three. All right, so the motion fails. Because of the tie vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Jimmy?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, if the commission does want to vote to make changes. Staff would be happy to come back next month with, with new language modeled on other zones in the, in our code. That do permit manufactured homes. Rather than trying to come up with language on the fly tonight, I think we might want to. Have us come back next month with some language that we can, that we can take from other codes, just to make sure it's, it's, it's strong language. Strong code.
Yes, that, that sounds like a good recommendation. To Mr. Vice Chairman, are you comfortable with that? Will table, motion table with for further consideration?
Thank you very much, Mr. Davis. That's a great recommendation.
All right. Commissioner, I'll entertain a motion for tabling this.
How would I write that? Do you need a second or do I have to?
Yeah, you have to move and just, just, just move that you're, we're tabling ZO 21-001. Future meeting.
Thank you. I move that we are tabling ZO 21-001, amendment to the city of Cottonwood zoning ordinance adding section 428, AR 87 zone, agricultural residential, until the next meeting.
Let's modify it to a future meeting, okay?
No pressure on the city staff.
Okay, do I have a second to that motion, please?
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Romeo, second to the vice chairman's motion. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Romeo?
Aye.
Commissioner Garrison?
Aye.
Commissioner DeSisto?
Aye, for sure.
Commissioner Kling? Vice Chairman Mastin?
Aye.
Chairman Williams?
Aye, unanimously carried. All right, guys, go do your work and we'll see you, we'll see about it hopefully next meeting. All right, next order of business is ZO 21-002, amendment to the city of Cottonwood zoning ordinance, section 426, National Forest Zone District. Mr. Davis, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. As I mentioned before, this recent annexation, majority of the area is in National Forest, Coconino National Forest. And it was called to our attention that the National Forest Zone, which is probably the zone that most of this or all of that National Forest land would be rezoned at some point. Language in there is specific to the Prescott National Forest. And that is probably because back when that was written, Cottonwood was only on the west side of the river and was only in the Prescott National Forest area. So we're proposing, just to make it clear, that this zone applies to both Prescott National Forest and Coconino National Forest lands. That we remove specific mentions of Prescott National Forest. I did reach out to both National Forests and did get a comment back from Prescott National Forest. Saying they have no objection to this and they understand why we would need to make this change. So that, that's the background of this. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Good, okay, I don't have any questions. Commissioner Romeo, do you have any questions on this proposal?
No, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Garrison, any questions, sir?
No, sir, thank you.
Commissioner DeSisto, any questions, sir?
Just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, all we're doing is taking out the Prescott National Forest altogether? Or are we including the, yeah, our, you know. It looks as though we're just taking out the Prescott National Forest, correct?
Just the name, yes. Apply to all National Forests, yes.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Kling?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Okay, Vice Chairman, you have any questions?
No questions, thank you, sir.
All right, roll call, okay. Do we have anybody in the public who want to address this issue? I don't see anybody, don't hear anybody, so we'll, we'll close the. I don't see anybody, uh, don't hear anybody, so we'll, we'll close the, uh, floor, I think, uh, we just go to, write to a motion to push this one through, I think it's pretty straightforward. Vice Chairman, I'd entertain a motion from you, please.
I move to recommend approval to the city council, the proposed amendments to section four two six.
Do I have a second to that motion, please?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Romeo, seconds the Vice Chairman's motion, a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Romeo?
Aye.
Commissioner Garrison?
Aye.
Commissioner De Sisto?
Aye.
Commissioner Kling?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Mastin?
Aye.
Chairman Williams?
Aye, unanimously carried, very good, alrighty, that's good, all right, on to our last item of business is a review of the update of the Cottonwood General Plan twenty twenty five annual report and recommendations to the city council. Uh, Gary, are you handling this one, sir?
That's me, thank you, Mister Chairman, Commissioners, uh, General Plan twenty twenty five is the policy document that forms the basis of all our, uh, planning and zoning regulations as well as, uh, other, uh, operations of the city. And, uh, the, uh, state law requires a city planning agency to provide an annual update to the, uh, city council on the progress and implementation of the plan. And so this is what we do every year and, uh, uh, I've included a table of the various, uh, goals and objectives in the different chapters of the code. And in the very right-hand column, uh, there's a place for us to put in, for staff to put in, uh, the status of projects, uh, as they, as, uh, anything's happened in the last, uh, year or so. So, uh, I've sent this out to various staff, uh, departments in the city and, uh, am forwarding these comments, uh, which shows the progress that's been made on, uh, many of these items in the plan. As you can see, it's a, it's a pretty long list of items, uh, that are, that are in the plan. Um, so the, the, so that's part of what we're talking about tonight is the, is the, looking at this and, uh, forwarding this along, uh, to, to council for, for our annual report to the council. Uh, the other idea is that, um, we are about to begin our ten-year update. The, uh, state law requires us to update our, uh, do a major update of our, uh, general plan every ten years and we're about, uh, oh, three years away from having to do that, maybe less. So it's about time that we, uh, start thinking about it. And I just kind of wanted to, uh, let you know, uh, give you a heads up and like I said in the, in the staff report, be, uh, looking at the plan and seeing if there's any things that, uh, may, uh, not necessarily need to be in a, in a, uh, general policy document, uh, things that are very specific. You can see there's a very, very detailed list of items that are, that are, uh, required as objectives, uh, some of them certainly are absolutely proper to be there, some of them may be uh, a little, little too much and might be, uh, implemented through other means. The city does have a strategic plan that we update every year, which is, kind of serves as a work program for us to, um, to carry out our, our goals and objectives. And, uh, that could be a means of carrying out the, the general plan, uh, objectives as well. So, anyway, I just wanted to kind of put that on your radar screen. We'll be talking about that in the next several months, about what the state requires of a general plan. Uh, they require a number of different elements and, uh, information within those elements. But beyond that, it's up to the city as to how, uh, detailed or general that, uh, we can be. So with that, I'll, uh, uh, answer any questions you might have on this.
Okay, uh, I'll start out, uh, I, uh, I had, was able, I sat on the committee this last time go around, uh, to formulate this, the general plan. It basically was a updating of a previous plan from, uh, earlier on, yeah, and, uh, updated to bring into more current conditions. This was done in, what, two thousand twelve, thirteen? Uh, it was approved by the, uh, city council and the voters, uh, uh, in two thousand fourteen, um, it's got a lot of detail. There's a lot of, there are a number of things that you will, you see that they're blank on the right-hand side, but, uh, a number of them like, uh, objective three, six, encourage infill development, redevelopment is comparable with the established neighborhood character. That really doesn't probably take any real action, that's just an idea that we, when we're looking at proposed developments, that we should take that into consideration, uh, uh, so there's a number of that and then a lot of it gets into a lot of detail. Um, Gary and I were talking earlier today and, and revision, it would have been nice to have executive summaries maybe with each one of these to somebody could just really grasp it and not worry about going through all the details, um, of it, um, but it does serve as a roadmap for us. It's a guide, yeah. It can be deviated from, but we need to have really good reasons if we're gonna deviate from this plan. Um, and I think that, you know, it applies to us and the city council, um, to do it and it, it does give us, um, some real guidance as to when we're looking at new developments, uh, including this proposed one that's going to be coming up before us in the next few months. Um, we need to be cognizant of what's in this general plan and what the vision of the city is currently regarding this plan. Um, Commissioner Garrison was on the council, I believe, uh, when this was approved and and probably couldn't give us some additional insight.
No, no, I think you've covered it perfect, um, it's, it's a great document, it's a ton of work. And, um, these modifications from time to time just bring it current and I think the group that did all this work did a great job of trying to cover everything. It's, it's very robust, so. No, thank you very much. You guys did a great job.
Yeah, and, and it can be modified. There are procedures, in fact, we're going to have one here. Uh, if the applicant is submitting for rezoning, uh, we do, uh, Director Ellis, uh, you might explain that process to us. We are going to be looking to a major, um, amendment which requires our recommendation and approval by city council to make that happen. You want to talk a little bit about that, Scott, for us, please?
Yes, Mister Chairman, uh, Commission. So the potential project for the spring break, if, if it comes forward the way we think, um, will require a major general plan amendment. Within our general plan, there's parameters that are set that discusses what constitutes a major amendment versus a minor amendment. Um, in recent history, meaning the last seven, eight years, we've only done minor amendments to the general plan. Uh, usually the amendment is required when a rezone request does not conform to the land use aspect of the general plan. So for example, if you have a rezone request that, uh, is designated low-density residential and they want to put apartments, they didn't have to do a general plan amendment, which would change that to high-density residential on the land use map. By law, a rezone has to be in conformance with land use designation, so that's why you'll see some of those minor ones. Um, usually what triggers a major one is size of the development, the size of the acreage to be rezoned. In this case, it's about two hundred and eighty acres, so that definitely triggers a major amendment. Uh, right now, major amendment is required to be done within the same calendar year that it is requested. So that request has to happen in the next several weeks in order to make it by that deadline. There's my understanding, though, that there is a bill in the even state house right now to do away with that, so it doesn't have to be. We'll see if that happens or not. Um, there's various public hearings and various review periods, comment periods for a major amendment, so it's upon the applicant, applicant to basically state and prove how this amendment improves the general plan as a whole, um, as well as a rezone. So that's what we've been looking at. The commission will have chance to review it, provide comments, um, all of that stuff before it goes to city council.
Yeah, and we will have a vote to recommend it or not recommend, right?
Correct.
Going forward. So we will be involved in this, uh, process, um. Anybody else, uh, uh, you know, it's sort of a lengthy thing, it's, you know, it's a read, puts you to sleep a little bit sometimes, uh, but, uh, Commissioner Romeo, do you have any questions of Scott regarding this or Gary?
No question, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Garrison, any other comments, sir, or questions?
No, well, one, um, one item I just, I just found under the proposed street improvement projects under chapter four, the circulation element. Uh, item number fifteen is called out as Goddard Road. I believe the correct name for that is Ogden Ranch Road and that project has been fulfilled, so that probably should be pulled from the street improvement proposals.
Very good, good catch. Yes, that, that's just happened, the county named it and, uh, it has been renamed, I think, or, or correctly named.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner De Sisto?
Uh, yes, Mister Chairman, uh, being relatively new here and realizing how much I don't know, would you recommend that we keep with us, uh, the Cottonwood General Plan twenty twenty five with us all the time? Or would we keep it in our book?
Oh, yeah, yes, I would think that's an excellent idea, particularly with, uh, we're starting to see and we're going to see, I believe, hopefully, uh, a number of developments start up, um, and, uh, come to fruition and before us and approval. And it would be good for each one of us to have a pretty good understanding and a feel, particularly for the land, for the, the parts that really apply to us, um, and, and our approval or consideration, approval of new proposed projects. So, uh, maybe we can, uh, Scott, we can, uh, uh, make this a permanent part of our, um, uh, in fact, I would encourage you, we turn, return, uh, Mr. Kling, uh, just for your indication, we, we return these, uh, booklets to the, uh, uh, department so they can refill them for next meeting. Uh, but I would encourage everybody to take what you see here and, uh, pull it out. I would also recommend, um, if you go to the city website, you can, and maybe we can just, maybe Scott, this is something you guys can do, uh, uh, to include the vision section, which is not in here, I don't believe. Uh, and the introduction and the, and the, uh, vision sections would be a good addition to these uh, specific goals and objectives. And I think we should get that to each one of you and we really encourage you to study it and those sections in detail. Uh, and so when we have these, um, developments come before us, we'll, we'll have a, a good feel for what the vision of the city's been, uh, up till now. Okay, um, Commissioner Kling, do you have any questions or comments, ma'am?
No, but I do want to thank you for the added clarity and explanation on everything, given I'm the new kid here. Thank you so much.
Don't feel bad.
Yeah, it's a little overwhelming. Uh, my initial meeting was, uh, at Vegas Union High School, they held at the auditorium, there were seven hundred people there, uh, uh, objecting to the proposal before the, for us and then we put us up on the stage. They had the balconies lined with police officers and I was the first one that was, I was on the end of the table and I was the first one asked to comment after they closed the, the meeting. I'm not fellow, but Gary, I, I, I understand.
Thank you.
All right, um, Vice Chairman Mastin, ma'am.
No, no questions, um, and I look forward to reading it in depth. I've skimmed it, but there's a lot, so.
Right, um, what they've asked us tonight is unless anybody has any real objections, uh, to recommend that, uh, we send this updated version as a, and I would, uh, um, uh, I don't know, we have to have in the motion, uh, Director Ellis, but, uh, Commissioner Garrison's technical, uh, correction, I'm not sure we have to, do we have to add that in the motion for recommendation?
Wouldn't hurt, Mr. Jones.
Huh?
Wouldn't hurt.
Wouldn't hurt, okay, all right. Vice Chairman?
Commissioner, uh, Garrison, can you remind me, uh, that section?
Uh, was section four, I pulled everything out of the packet, hold on, um, section four, or chapter four, circulation element, item number fifteen and the proposed street improvement projects be modified to Ogden Ranch Road and removed from the list of proposed street improvements?
It's, it's on the very last page of the, uh, attachments in the, uh, uh, circulation project recommendations update for twenty twenty one annual report. It's the, it's the last page of your packet, top of the last page.
Just writing down Ogden Ranch Road for myself.
Item number fifteen, that Goddard Road should be Ogden Ranch Road, I believe.
And removed.
Pardon?
And removed.
And removed, right, it's already done.
It's already done.
Yes, what we put a note there that it's been completed.
Okay. I'm just gonna put, put a note, it's been completed. All right. Okay. I move to recommend the proposed updates for the annual report, oh, Chairman, do you have to? Okay, I move to recommend the proposed updates for the annual report on General Plan twenty twenty five be forwarded to the city council with the stipulation that chapter four circulation element, item fifteen, uh, be modified to Ogden Ranch Road with a note that it has been completed.
Okay, Commissioner Garrison, does that sound okay?
Sounds great, thank you.
Okay, good. Do I have a second to that motion, please?
I'll second.
Mister Garrison, was that you, sir?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Garrison, uh, seconds the Vice Chairman's motion, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Romeo?
Aye.
Commissioner Garrison?
Aye.
Commissioner De Sisto?
Aye.
Commissioner Kling?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Mastin?
Aye.
Commissioner, or Chairman Williams?
Aye, unanimously carried. All right, good. Get that behind us and go. All right, uh, we're, next item with discussion items, uh, Director Ellis?
Yeah, uh, Mister Chairman, Commission, uh, we put on the agenda future meeting locations, want to get the commission's input on continuing to have meetings virtually like we have been, or go ahead and start having them in person again at the, uh, clubhouse. Uh, I know prior to going exclusively virtual, we did meet a few times at the rec center last fall, uh, that was because we anticipated some large attendance at some of the council meetings, so it made it easier to do that. Council has since moved back to the clubhouse down in Old Town. So if the commission desires, we can start doing that next month, or we can continue to have meetings virtually as we have been the last couple of months.
Okay, um, and for the, those, uh, I think hopefully most of you are familiar, I don't know if you've been in the clubhouse. That's the building, uh, across from City Hall or from the council chambers and the finance building that's, uh, the odd building next to the new, uh, uh, brewery and it offers a, a large room which accommodates, uh, uh, being spaced out, uh, for each one of the commissioners and the staff and, and any, anybody from the public that's for each one of the commissioners and the staff and, and any, anybody from the public that's there with us or other staff. And it, it works well, um, it worked well for us. Uh, personally, I like the idea of in-person meetings, uh, these have worked pretty well, but, you know, like tonight, I run out of gas, I run out of power, so they, they can get interrupted, but, uh, uh, the City Council is doing that, as I understand, and, um, I don't have any real objection to that. Uh, I'm one of those lucky ones, though, I get to be, get my second vaccination tomorrow, so, uh, uh, I don't feel any, I have any safety issues with that, but, uh, we would maintain distance and we would require masks, uh, at the meeting, um, uh, until you're seated, and we will be spread out, so, uh, uh, I for one would, would like to see that, uh, uh, Commissioner Romeo, do you have any input on this?
I'm also ready to go back to in-person meetings, I'm comfortable with that.
Yes, Commissioner Garrison?
No, I prefer to go back to in-person, so that would be great.
Yes, uh, Commissioner De Sisto?
Absolutely, back to, uh, in-person meetings, um, I absolutely learn more that way, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Commissioner Kling, you haven't been with us, but, uh, what would be your wishes here?
I'm all for meeting all of you in the flesh, um, that is perfectly fine by me, um, as long as there's enough notice. I have a little one, you know, to, for bedtime and such, so as long as there's enough notice to arrange for that, that's, that's perfectly fine, yeah.
Yeah, well typically, we meet once a month on the third Monday, uh, uh, January and February are the exceptions because of the holidays, we meet on the fourth, uh, Monday of the month. Uh, we also could have, uh, if, depending on the agenda and what's going on, we, uh, staff may want us to have a special meeting, uh, like, you know, in between, but you would be fully notified and well in advance of, uh, any special meetings. I think in eleven years, I've been to maybe three, two or three, so it, it's very infrequent. Basically, it's our once-a-month meeting on the third Monday of the, uh, of the month. Um, uh, Commissioner, Vice Chairman?
Uh, I'm neutral, I like the Zoom meetings because I live my life on the internet, but I'm also happy to see you guys all in person.
Very good, very good, yeah, and like I say, I, uh, I think we get a lot more from that, uh, that interaction, um, these have gone good, I've been very surprised, I do some other meetings too, and it, uh, we're finally getting used to it, but, uh, and it's, and it's convenient in some cases, but like, for these meetings for the general public, I think it allows them to also hopefully attend. One thing we try to encourage is to have more public input, and a lot of times it gets pretty lonely, but it would be nice to have, being in a facility, I think will, uh, enhance that ability over being a, having them try to go to a, come to a Zoom meeting or go-to meeting like we're here tonight. And, because we do value their input, uh, in our, uh, consideration deliberations. Um, so Scott, uh, um, I would like to propose if, unless the city has the other real reservations, that, uh, we move back to our in-person meetings at the clubhouse, and, uh, it works out to be a very good facility for that. Um, I see our city managers in attendance, uh, Mr. Corbin, would you like to beam in on us for comments on this, sir?
I like staying here in the dark, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, right, you had your video out there, that's.
I did, I've been here listening and, and, uh, what a great conversation tonight. No, I, I, I don't really have anything else to add, um, we, uh, the director and I spoke about this, we think we can do it safely, City Council seems to be doing it, COVID numbers are on the decline, um, in a great way. I was just looking, we only had five cases in the hospital, lowest number since early November, uh, of inpatients. So things are really looking, uh, really good, and we'll give it a try, and, you know, if things, uh, turn back for the worse, we'll, we'll regroup, but I think we can plan for the next couple of meetings in the clubhouse. Uh, maybe by summer, we'll even be back in the, uh, old chambers.
Yes, that sounds good, well, the, uh, it worked real well, and, uh, so, uh, Scott, yeah, let's proceed accordingly, and, uh, we'll go from there. Uh, anybody else have any, uh, comments to the good of the commission tonight? Uh, I will, uh, say I really welcome all you new commissioners, we've had quite a turnover this past year, and, uh, but it's good to see we have a number of, uh, younger members of the community, uh, working members, uh, out there on the commission for a number of years. Uh, we, really, the commission's composed mainly of retirees, uh, which I'm one, I'm not necessarily against them, I think it's great. Commissioner De Sisto, I appreciate his, uh, uh, participation, but it's really great to, you folks are gonna be living here and working here in the future for our community, and I'm glad to see you and really appreciate you, uh, coming on board and being part of this, uh, process, uh, uh. You have, uh, many times, I've made a little different take on some of these and where the future's going, and, and I think that's good for our discussion, just like we had tonight on, on the, uh, two-acre rezoning. I, I really encourage that, and, uh, we'll go forward. Um, with that, I'll declare this meeting adjourned, and we'll see everybody, uh, next month, hopefully. Thank you again for being here.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks for the one, welcome.